Okay, I think we're ready to start the public hearing on 50 Loring Road. Is the applicant ready for my presentation? Are you the engineer, Jay?
Hey, Jay!
Stay the rest of the evening.
You're so lucky.
You have me tonight.
Feeling with that's all the time.
Okay, we've given this hearing about forty minutes. And again, if you could keep your presentation to twenty, you know it'd give us kind of comments from the board, our consultants, and anyone in the audience. Just for the record again, I'm Al Aveland, I'm the chairman of the board, and my other members are?
Steve off camera.
Roy Channell-Bach.
Susan Karat.
Alright, so, you're gonna start off?
Yes.
Jay, okay, go ahead.
So I just want to walk you through the name of the real, the current name of the real business. So we have thirteen of butters within three hundred feet of our property. Eleven of them are residential. We have two commercial, NWRA and NBC. The average RGA within that area for the residential is just under forty-two hundred square feet, forty-one sixty-five. Our high is seventy-seven hundred square feet, which is the two number here, and then the low is about twenty-five sixty-two. So we have a big variance between them. The average RGA to lot area is about seven percent, and the high being thirteen and the low being four percent. What we're proposing for the project site is existing house is just under two thousand square feet, it's eighteen oh eight. We're proposing a fifty-five hundred building square foot house. So the RGA to lot area is gonna change from three percent to nine percent. So nine percent, we're in the ballpark of the average, we're right around, you know, thirty percent's the high, and four percent's the low. So, here's the proposed site plan. The, this is actually the revised plan for the original sidewalk. We're not gonna go through all the original stuff, so this way, we know we wanna make some revisions, things on the sidewalk last week. So, this is the existing house, delineated here with the pink. We have the new house in brown. Existing curb cut, the basic comes up through here, you can see the driveway through the section there. So we're gonna use that same throat come up here, and then basically make our little section through that. So we have proposed garage, this is a thirty-foot pump hall right there, and then we have this little section there that we come up. Since the sidewalk, what we did is we looked at all our grading, we had about four hundred fifty yards of fill in the front. We had, I mentioned, I think five hundred on the sidewalk, it's actually four hundred fifty yards of fill. We knocked that down to two hundred twenty, so we cut it in half. So basically, all our grading is coming through this section here. The reason why we have this grading for the driveway is, the existing driveway changes in slope three times. It goes from being basically a ten percent slope, to about a fourteen percent slope, to a twenty-two percent slope. Then when we're walking up that little section uphill. So what we're doing is we're trying to make it more consistent, because we're getting closer with our garage than what the actual, last section of the existing driveway is. So we made this consistent, so that brought some fill down through the section there. Even though we did do that, we're actually saving all the existing trees in that area. So, since the sidewalk, we're actually saving eight additional trees, all of them in this front yard section. So I'll let Karen talk about that some more. So the, all the grading for that, for that fill area is through this section here, and then up around this section. So what we did is, we used to have that wall that wrapped around here, took out that lodge, twenty-four inch deciduous. Now we just flare it out and let that grading just go on naturally. On the back, so basically, the existing, the septic system is a six-bedroom septic. The original pool for this project site, before the owner who owns it now bought it, was a seven bedroom. So we brought it down a little bit to meet where the actual proposed houses. We have three recharged basins that offset the groundwater, the drainage change. But once again, we're doing our reductions, basically. We have no net changes, basically, there's no change at all to the two side butters, because we actually don't change any of their sub-areas at all. Just to the streams where we actually have our major subarea to change. And over there, where we actually have reductions of anywhere from seven percent up to twenty-five percent on the small stone. So that's our peak rating and volume runoff. The ridge, the proposed ridge is, as we mentioned on the sidewalk, it's about fourteen or fifteen feet above the existing house. Same scenario as the last project site. Deck house has one story, and for the first floor, this is gonna be a two-story with an attic, so that's where that fifteen feet's being made up. Our allowable is one seventy-eight seven. Our, basically, our inch height is one seventy-four, so we're, we're thirty-two, thirty-two point three feet above the actual grading. So we're well below, we're almost five feet, we're almost at five feet of play. So, I know part of the discussions I'm gonna talk about is the disturbances that we have in the back, because of some of the lodge deciduous. What we have in the back, and that's kind of what comes into play for this project site, is that the existing house from front to back, at least I tell you, is about an eight-foot grade change. From ours, it's about a two-foot grade change, and that's because we're cutting a lot in the backyard. So when we do that, we're putting these retaining walls in to help with our cut. It's helping with drainage and also helping us to actually create somewhat of a yard in the backyard area. So, to basically allow us to do, you know, basically about a twenty-foot yard through the section here, and about a twenty-five-foot yard through that section there. We have two retaining walls with some grading in between. Karen will be able to walk you through the actual proposed plantings that we have through that section. But that's where the majority of our disturbance on the project site is behind the house, especially now that we've reduced the grading for the front yard. Basically, it's a net cut project site, that's the problem, is that by the time this is all said and done, we're about eighteen hundred yards cut. When you take all this out, take the actual house foundation out, like all that other stuff, it's a large cut.
So you're hauling material off-site?
Correct, yeah.
So, we're advertised for, on the eighteen, a earth removal public hearing. But wanted to try to get sort of feel and all that, as far as whether this works. And so, knowing that we'd be keeping the hearing open for preparing a decision anyways, that way we can have discussion, depending on where things go. Special permit may either not be needed, it's kept on-site, other changes occur. So then we finish up. If we get a plan that still results with earth removal, then at our next hearing, we have that hearing and resolve it, and then are working on two decisions.
Well, let me ask you, do you think, Jay, that there's any way to design this site so that you don't wind up taking any material off-site?
There is, and that's, Gil, Dave and I were kind of walking through it. We put this forward, there's actually two scenarios, and I actually kinda show you. This is one. So this is the actual site plan, and it's directly below, it's the exact same thing. If we propose this retaining wall on the back, that retaining wall is ten to twelve feet tall. That wall will let us be below our number, so we don't need a special permit at all. But aesthetically, of course, it doesn't really do what we need it to do. It doesn't, the yard itself isn't that great. And basically, you're gonna walk out of the back of the house, and you're looking at a ten to twelve foot tall wall. So what, when I said-
We need all your setbacks?
When we tell the setbacks. So what happens is, as it gets, it's a structure, of course. This whole section here is all compliant to setback, this whole section is compliant to setback. The sections where we start dropping the grade, where it comes down because of where the house is, that's all inside the setback, but it's all compliant. So, right in this section here is about ten to twelve feet tall, as it gets further down, the section stops dropping down. So that's why when you were looking at, because one of those numbers things where you're looking at this project and you're going, okay, I can make this compliant, but it doesn't really make sense to put that as our design.
So it's that, it's that house design or nothing?
No, no, well, it's that, the other, the other scenario is- I came up with this now, that basically, pull this house forward, just so you can see what would happen. And that, once again, reduces our cut, makes us more, more towards a net bounds. But then, of course, Steve went to his grade, and pulled the grade out to the front, and stayed, basically, starts taking out all the trees that we wanted to save.
But, that's what I'm saying. But in every case, it's the exact same house design?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because from the engineering, I'm just trying to work with. We're working with that scenario, which is what we have for the architectural right now, which is what the client wants, and maybe it's a nice looking house.
But it is possible to design nice-looking houses that actually work with the grades?
And, well, there is, and that's, I understand what you're saying, and it does work with the grade a little bit, and the reason why I'm saying that is that there is a drop from first floor to garage, we do have a three-foot drop to be able to make that grade change through there. The reason why this actually is happening is, and I thought this would be better for the actual project site, instead of us being up on a hill. We do have that five feet of play with our heights. We're actually cutting this because we're trying to keep this grade in the front all the same. Because what happens is, the existing house, even though it's a decked house, and it seems like it's all placed nicely and easily on the project site, there's three or four fill slopes that are basically, you know, three to one slopes coming up through this section here. Then, like I said, front to back is an eight-foot grade change. So anybody goes to put a house there, any type of house other than that existing decked house, it's still gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna fight that, that grade change. So you're gonna, you have to create some kind of little patio to be able to put your house on. And so, even if I took that, and we were talking more about the sidewalk, even if I took the existing house and put a garage on the side of it, that pushes all that grade out forward anyway. So, we're doing some kind of cut and fill through that section. So if I wanted to, if I wanted to really get the number to work with this, with the wall system, I brought that house up, that number would totally disappear below that, but it would be worse for the project site, that's why we wanted to, I wanted to present it this way.
But here's the deal. This, this requires either a monstrous retaining wall, or it requires us to issue a special permit for earth removal in order to get a center entrance colonial design. That's what, that's what this comes down to.
Or we could, as I mentioned, if I stop bringing the house up, it's the worst against-
It's still a central, central, it's still a whole design.
But that becomes a-
You know, my thought, this is the right house for this landscape. And you're just conforming the landscape to get a house that is, you know, somebody's idea of what they want, and this happens to be a lot of that.
Stick it down there.
And it's, I understand, it's-
You know where we're going.
Oh, without a doubt, and it's, it is, it has a little bit to do with that, I'm like, it's not saying, I'm not saying that this one percent, we talked about garage unders and everything else that could work on the site maybe slightly better, or better than what's there now. And that has to do with it, but as, that's why we wouldn't be talking about the sidewalk. Even if you, like I said, even if you kept the decked house as is, and just said, no, I'm gonna tear that down, I'm gonna keep the angle as is, I'm gonna put a second floor on it, but I wanna put a garage, that's still gonna create all this disturbance in the front. So, that's what I'm saying, I was like, if anybody wants a yard in the back, because of this grade, you're talking about, this grade change goes from basically one forty-six to one fifty-six in that short span. So anybody who wants a yard, even from the decked house, still's gotta put a lodge wall there. That's what I'm saying, like, I totally one percent understand that.
But more than yard, maybe it's the wrong block for it. I mean, more yard.
What year was this original, before the current?
I think, that's it, Sean had mentioned that, I think, they actually submitted, I don't believe they actually finalized the permits. So, I was looking, I was looking online for the certificate of action.
Yeah, I wanna know if that was-
I don't, how do you remember this one? Do you remember Ray Goodman? Ray Goodman had done the submission for this?
Did we ever see this line? I don't remember seeing this line.
The only thing I came across was, basically, it looked like it was continued and continued and continued. And then, I came across a letter from Susan to them saying, we need to know what you're doing, or we're gonna be denying, and I think it must have ended up-
Two thousand.
For two years ago.
But the fact is, you know, they were planning the current owners thing, they're-
But that was based on who sold it to him, he told them that it was permitted.
Someone told them.
But yeah, I had done the research, and it's actually, they had done all the submissions, they just didn't have a final, they never got their final approval. They went through sidewalks and public hearing and a lot of other stuff.
We were all having slight apprehension, they need to approve such a huge house.
Yeah, yeah. And they actually, it was a variance approved for the project site, and talked about keeping the existing house where the other house was constructed, so I'm like, they went, they got all those approvals as well to try to, so they were, I think they got their variance before they got the plan board approved, so it was, they sold it as that.
Oh, okay, so the current owner bought this without issue?
Without, you know, basically just a-
Without the new deal, it was, okay, they did not realize that in fact this had not been. Okay, so in that means we're basically starting with the things, right?
You know, I guess you're working at a disadvantage, and there are four architects sitting in this room right now. Not the architects. Any one of which would be glad to accept the challenge of working with this site. It's not the choice of either a center entrance colonial or a pre-fat decked house. I mean, those are not the only choices.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so, this puts us in an awfully awkward position of actually having to design the house, you know? What's the alternative? Well, you know, come up with a solution. And that's not what we're supposed to do, and we shouldn't. So, it's a, it's a, it's a problem. I mean, a twelve-foot high retaining wall is obviously a problem. Pushing the house forward is obvi-, for the street is obviously a problem. But hauling off the fill in order to make this house work is a problem too. I mean, it requires us to issue a special permit, so it puts us in a tough spot, but it does.
Which, of course, were the folks that made the major changes to the natural landscape, considering the bylaws, is something to try to avoid.
Right, right.
And they did a lot of work, I commend you guys on, on how much work you did pulling back, because they really, you know, that section of Loring Road is quite lovely, and they really worked hard at preserving that view, but now we're looking at something else.
I don't think I wanna be the guy sitting in the house right there, from the street, but those guys.
Which guys?
The guys that are sitting over here. I don't know if I'd be jumping up and down with ecstasy about, from the perspective.
I'm not scared of jumping.
What's on the right, what's that big white square?
That's the town square. And so the house itself is up there.
Drawing board is no more.
And is this just a no-go for you guys? All of you going with the special permit for this isn't that much? It's challenging, the views, the beautiful stuff. So I guess, give them work.
Yeah, I mean, well, we haven't heard from Steve yet, we haven't heard from our consultants.
Yeah, we haven't heard from Steve, have we?
Well, that's been a while. So, let's just make it one step at a time, too. Steve, you, anything they had on our initial responses?
Other than the fact that I hate it?
Just say what you need, Steve.
It's just a complete antithesis of what the planning board is trying to do. Preserving the rural character of western, the natural landscape, the scale and character of the, the other structures, houses in the neighborhood. For me, it's against everything that we're here to do.
Okay.
I have a second comment. I agree.
Maybe though, I don't know if you, maybe we should go ahead and listen to what you proposed to do to mitigate what we perceive as really serious issues on the site.
So...
It's almost unfair, isn't it?
Huh?
It's almost unfair.
She's out to challenge.
I'll show you. I have parents about her, by the way. So this, Jay didn't show you the previous drawing, this is what we brought to the sidewalk. And we had, we were losing all these, these large trees in here. And we had this lawn, a lawn like this, and we had a large, you know, wall up in front so that we could capture the grades when we could come out. The back part has remained the same, in reference, everything that I changed is, is forward. But these trees, there's-
Eight more.
Eight more trees we saved, and they're large, you know, chored trees. Most of the existing trees out in the front here are deciduous. And what I did was I added some evergreen, so let me show you, so this is what we had at sidewalk. And then this is what we changed the plan to. So, we, by changing the grade on the driveway, and by reduce, we reduced this wall over here. We still need to capture some, some grades, and there's a little log down below. So we caught the grade with this wall, we saved this large tree, which is, you know, this big around. Of course, we're losing ones that are in the driveway, but there's a twin tree that we saved, we've got twenty-one. Another one here, another one down by the septic. This one that was right close next to the driveway. So when you're looking up here, you're still, you're looking through the deciduous forest that you were looking through before. So really, from here down, you're not changing anything from the street, and it's pretty far distance. And then, in addition, we're adding some evergreens down here to screen, so up this, up this view and this view, all this down below is maintained along the street. So the streetscape is not, it's attitude, but it's not intended to be moved along the streetscape. So these are highs plus those, sort of, deaths down the ground. And then these ones are weight, weight up here, so we're also, we're also adding some more screening here. So, from this side, where this, where this wall is, we added a tree here from our first meeting with consultants to screen. So they're all, they're all ten to twelve. And then, in addition to all the existing deciduous trees right up in here, we've got some magnolias that we're adding for, you know, for the set for the people who are in the house, but also when they are in the week, they're, they're gonna give you some understory. Because right now, there's not any understory, it's all, it's like, you know, cathedral or columns, because it's all pumps. So this is gonna fill in the understory, and this is gonna fill in the understory, and this is gonna fill in some of the understory. So it's really, there is, I think, some good screening from the street. Then on here, between these two walls, if we maintain these two walls here, all of these plantings are native shrub plantings, they're gonna hold the slope, they're gonna track wildlife, they're gonna give seasonal interest, you know, some are deciduous, some are evergreen. So it does provide some habitat value as well.
One of my conceptions would be that there is, there is a real dichotomy here between the natural, sort of, the natural world and then the manicured world. It's almost, you know, like, it's almost like a strange sort of plot of artificiality right in among the existing woodland, which is, you know, it's a suburban vision.
Well, it's clearer in the woods, I mean, you have to have the septicus down here, and so you can't, I can't plant any trees on the septicus, right? So we, that's, you know, which is how it's done. And, and I think we've done minimal, the minimal law, so we've actually reduced the lawn more by this plan that we had previously, because we've swept all this, so this is all legal now instead. I mean, this, this edge doesn't have to be lawn, this could be ground cover in here. And this could be ground cover in here as well.
Jay, I'll use this image, because that's the, the corner they think exists in there right now. So as you can see, we talked about, here are a lot of the tall trees there, but beyond that, there's no plants or anything else there. So, on the Loring Road, this whole front section, and we're talking about natural landscape and et cetera. Right now, the natural landscape, we're talking about the trees that we are saving. And then we are actually adding more plantation than other medium-sized trees to there, so that we can actually add more density to the Loring Road. So, so like, you know, artificial versus natural, like, if this is what's there natural now, is what you guys prefer to see, you know, it's, we can obviously leave all this fiction out too, but we just felt that that was more of a, kind of, keeping the Loring Road, and then also keep the privacy, and then hide the house in the back.
But that's just, why do we have to hide the house? I feel like the front half of the site is, I really appreciate what you've done, and you're leaving it, you know, possibly as natural as you can. But then when you move to the backside of that, the lot, which is where the house actually is, it's a whole different story. It is a dichotomy, and why do we have to, why do we have to build something that's so, that's so wrong for the site that we then have to hide it from the street?
Right, I mean, I think that, if I interrupt you. They can get caught it. So, right near the existing house, it's sitting in, I don't know if you can see that way. So, we actually located a house on the existing foundation, which is basically trying not to disturb more of the natural scape around as much as possible. So, when we started on the project, obviously, we started with the list of the things that my clients didn't want, or like about the existing house. Beyond the fact that he was, he spent a lot of money and time fixing stuff, and he was well beyond, you know, he was not gonna worth it, we're saving it. We talked about building as it was, and adding garage actually on this side, on the back here. But, I don't know if I can show the picture. The, the way the existing driveway works, it's really long, and it covers a lot of asphalt section right now. So, our new design actually reduced the amount of asphalt that's currently on the site. So, on the back, you know, we, as you can see, like, the lawn area that we have is only twenty feet, it's not a large sprawling lawn that we are creating. And we came up with, these are two sections, I mean, two, obviously, tearing the retaining wall, so that we don't end up with the eight-foot tall. And then we felt, because the way the site is, everything's coming down, it's looking that way, we thought that there was more of a natural way to carve it to the back. And, well, in our ways, so we kind of kept natural landscape as much as we could on all three sides of the house. So, when we were trying to, obviously, deal with the really steep slope coming down, that's when, you know, we ended up sort of belt area here, in the back. And the lawn, obviously, you know, he wanted a larger, but we felt that this was, you know, good size, and also this way we can keep the retaining walls to four feet and below on both, both level. So that's sort of the design that we came up with. And, you know, we, and you guys are talking about a lot about how this is really wrong for the site, and disturbing a lot. Is it based on how much of a soil we're removing from the site, or what is it really based on? Because, you know, I'm kind of looking at this in terms of, well, as you said, we all have a different taste, a different house, you know, the Loring Road has a lot of different designs and sizes and whatnot. And, yeah, maybe this is our colonial house that you see in western or welsley everywhere else, but it happens to be a house that our client wants to build, and he likes his house. And we are trying to do as much as we can to have a modest size that can actually fit, and, you know, try to work with the existing grade.
Well, let me ask you this, would your client like to see a twelve-foot high retaining wall out the back?
No, oh, that's why we came up with the two levels, I mean-
No, I know, but, I mean, if we don't, if we, if we said no to the special, to the earth removal special permit, and he actually builds a twelve-foot high retaining wall, he's gonna be staring at it.
Well, then, then we, so if that's the only, sort of, the main problem that you're posing to this project, because of special permit, then maybe we need to, we can do like with a different septic design, or push things around a little bit more, so that we can meet the number. Because, I mean, in our ways, I mean, we're just trying to understand the source of, like, okay, I mean, if you say you don't like this project, it's, it's kind of like, okay, why, what, you know, it's hard for us to come up with a solution or respond to that. But if you tell us, okay, you know, the main reason I don't like this project is because of the amount of earth that you're moving from the site, then it gives us a little bit more area to work with. And then if that's the main source, then we can maybe, Jay and I, we talked about before the meeting, maybe there's a way to, you know, we're looking to septic a little bit, so that we can move it up a little bit, or something to make the numbers work, so that we don't need a special permit, or we don't need to remove as much of earth around the site.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can narrow it down to like, there is one, one, one thing to fix, and then that's okay, kind of thing. You know, in our bylaws, in our, in the standards, which are, you know, part of it, there's a real, you know, strong encouragement to build in conformity with the land, the landscape, and that. This is a complete, whether it's a colonial or not, that's a personal decision, some people like it, and some people don't, that's not the issue. But, when you think about the house that was there- But when you think about the house that was there, it was sited in a fashion because of the shape of this lot, and because of the terrain, it was sited in a certain way, and it was a certain size that would fit in with that landscape, right? So I'm not saying build it back the same, the exact same way or lap, but it may be that you, you know, look to that kind of a design for guidance for it. And, you know, I mean, yes, I know, if he wants to sell something, he's not going to sell something with a ten-foot wall behind him. That's, that's not going to market.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and this is, you know, eventually he will sell it whether he lives in it first or not.
I mean, you know, we don't even have to, but, you know, so the existing house is like, you know, we might, I don't know, we should have had a really close-up of that existing house, because, I mean, you know, you guys are talking about how this house actually fits into landscape, there is a major, great difference from the front of the house and the back of the, there's no really front door to this house.
It's not a choice of deck house or colonial. It's, it's the principle of working with the contours as much as possible.
That's kind of what we want to, just, just so we, this house actually wasn't excited as nicely as it seems, because it's been sitting there for sixty years or whatever it is, so it seems like it is. But this is all filled, that's what I'm saying, I'm like, it's all, that's, so when we, because when we were digging this for the septic system, this is all filled through there. So I'm like, you have, you have ten feet of fill through this whole section here, and then they cut back this side. So I'm like, they did almost the same thing that we're proposing, except they did, you know, they did it on an angle. I'm like, so that's the only thing I was trying to get to the point, I actually, you know, I did find that other one. This is the one that, of course, nobody wants. This, this is the, basically, this is about an eight-foot high wall, the house comes forward, this is all compliant, this doesn't need a special permit, pushes all those grades forward, this gets deeper stuff. That's what I was saying, I'm like, becomes one of those things, right? But it becomes one of those things where...
It's like same thing.
Do you chase, do you chase the, do you chase the special permit number, or it becomes one of those things, because even if we've got a house that worked, say we worked out a house that, we had a multi-level, it came off in the back, but it becomes one of those numbers, but we're still, we still want to somewhere in the backyard, so we have a wall in the back. If we're close to that thousand yards, I'm like, I'm thinking, what, what becomes that number?
Your client's not here, right? You know, so, I mean, I would encourage you to view this as a real opportunity, and to have the last of optimism, but as an opportunity to like, go, you know, how do you convince this client that maybe you can do better upon the site? That's going to make, you know, be better for the planning board, better for the neighbors, better for the town, and probably maybe a better project as well. It might not be quite as large, it might be, you know, turned or sited slightly differently. I mean, we got some experts on that. But that's what I would encourage you guys to, you know, go back and do a little bit.
So what we're asking them to do is they definitely detected the use along the city credit check, but we'd rather not see them come back here for a special permit, or move it. Can I just say that?
Well, a couple of comments from, from our consultants. Yeah. Dave, any, you know, I don't know what to say at this point, you know?
I mean, well, the easy part is stolen once, I mean, you know, they're reducing the runoff of the site, and, but, you know, that's not the issue at once, you're all wrestling with it.
Right. From an engineering perspective, it works.
Yeah, yeah. You know, driveway's as steep as you want it. I've never actually seen a twenty-two percent driveway before, okay?
That driveway, I'm saying, yeah.
The final end, yeah.
Yeah, the final end.
You need to pull it out after.
I, I can't, they don't park it, do they?
Yeah, yeah, they do, yeah. Well...
I bought, I bought because I don't want to...
I mean, they park, they park there because of the entrance issues. That's, that's the problem, because...
Oh, because they don't want to go into the basement?
Exactly, so, like, they go to the side, so that they can just go up to the five steps to the, the side door, so that's why they use part of the driveway.
I, you know, a little editorial portion is, I'm afraid what we'll see when it comes back. I'm concerned. Because, because no one's building Swiss Family Robinson houses. I mean, you know, that might be too much of a pragmatic, but...
I, I agree, I think, I think we need to kind of tread a little carefully here. I think the landscape, from, from the landscape portion, I think they've done a great job coming pretty far on this.
I don't know, I'm not so wild about ten to twelve-foot screen trees from forty, for example.
What's there, though, is, is tall canopies on, on high, high trunks. And Karen is, is really, she saved almost everything out there and put in a great amount of mid-story canopy, and really, I think it is really enhancing the woodland edge from the street view. And I think what you're going to see out there from the landscape aspect is going to be actually better than what's there right now.
What about from the neighbors?
From the neighbors, I mean, I can't speak to the architecture, and I think that's clearly where you guys are focused.
No, I mean, it's just screening.
The retaining walls you won't see, because they're cut walls, so they won't be seen from the neighbors.
You know, what about the house itself? You gotta get a pretty good shot of that.
And that's, that's part of the reason why we cut it, because of that, this elevation, we're trying to keep this out with the gate.
We have a section?
Yep. So this is, this is pretty long here, and the idea is you can see we're actually at the same elevation, so we want to keep the garage section, we cut it down a few feet so we could actually be at the same elevation as we came through there. So, you know, we're, of course, a section.
You gotta look at the cable in.
Yeah.
And that's gonna, that's gonna be pretty visible, isn't it?
Because that's their side.
Yeah. What is the back?
Yeah, I'm sorry, was, was that a yes, or?
Yeah, you'll see, I mean, you'll, there'll be parts of it that you'll see.
How can we make it invisible?
I mean, there's a good amount of perimeter plantings around the outer edge there.
Make it invisible.
Make it invisible, yes, so they'll have to add a little bit more screening around at that, above that last retaining wall.
Yeah. Okay, pretty heavy.
Mm-hmm.
For sure, and all the way up, I think, because they don't, I don't imagine they sit in their house three hundred and sixty-five days a year, but imagine they actually go out in the yard, wasn't it? So it's, it's just going to be, it's, I'm just trying to see what we can do to mitigate the impact on that, on that property. But I'm not sure I understand the editorial comment. Is it that, is it that it's just not possible to design a building that works with those grays? Is that, do you really believe that?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. There's, somewhere out there, there's the right person for this lot, in, in all your minds.
There's lots of right people.
Let's find them again here, but I, I, you know, I'm, what I'm afraid of is that to avoid the special permit process, and to avoid twelve- and eight-foot walls in the back, they'll do four-foot walls in the back. They'll take all that fill, because you, what you haven't seen is kind of like the splitting the baby option, which I have in my head, which just takes all that fill and leaves it on site, gets where it gets left, along the front, the scenic road.
And then all areas in front will die.
Right. And all gets cleared, it all gets filled, it all gets replanted.
But that's not in compliance with our standards.
Yeah, I don't know that we would approve that anymore than we would approve that. It's not, doesn't require a special permit. It just totally requires site plan approval.
It requires site plan approval, and they, and we have the sta, we have to refer to the standards. I mean, David was absolutely right about that.
You did bring up one picture of your things about what...
Like a similar, like trying to keep, get below the special permit?
Yes.
So what happens?
How do you get below your special permit, and how do you...
And that's, and that's basically what happens here, is that, you pull a house forward, then ten feet, this becomes about an eight-foot high wall.
Yeah, and all the grays shift.
The grays shift this way now. We could always try to play with this, with some, some kind of, you know, extending this wall to try to save these trees, but predominantly, that's kind of what David was seeing, what I was, if we really wanted to make this like a four-foot high wall, of course, the fill would come even farther, or we'd bring the, you know, bring the house up, or whatever we wanted to do.
All are over trees.
Yeah.
No, they don't survive. They just don't survive anymore.
So the idea is, this basically becomes a steeper slope for the driveway. I'm like, now, we were just talking about a twenty-two percent, this is like an eighteen percent driveway, because we've shortened the length, we've pushed it forward. So it's, it's, it's just one of those things where, like David mentioned, that's why when we first submitted, I said, let's ask about the special permit, because I felt us putting the entire disturbance, or I should say, ninety percent of our disturbance in the back of the house seemed like a better idea from the site.
Let's talk to the neighbors. Do you, do you have any comments to make?
Well, I would echo very much what you said. One of the things that has always been part of Weston's charm is the fact that it is a community, a rural community in the midst of a lot of suburban communities. And this is, as somebody said, this is a, this is a suburban idea, this is not an idea about dropping the house in nature, which, whatever one may think of that deck house, that is the way it appears. And they were, if they did use, felt they were more clever about it than having to build a bunch of retaining walls, to advertise to the world that they had any wall, that type of stuff. Obviously, I am a, I am a noted proponent of trying to save these kinds of houses, and I'm not going to push that necessarily. But I do think that there is a whole ethos about the way in which that house is designed, or in which our house, or your own is designed, and the way in which frankly, most of the houses on the lawn are well designed, certainly on our end. That is, they're, whether they're old or new, they're, they're dropped in nature, they are not forced onto a site that doesn't want it. This is not a house designed for this site, it's a house designed for a flat site, and you're forcing it onto that site. And there's no two ways, there's, there's no getting around it. I mean, if, if you want to put a house on that site, and you want it to be a traditional house, design something that steps in such a way that you can make that work. It can be done. But there's, there's no, there's, there's, there's no, there's no joy, there's no creativity in this. I mean, it's just, it's, it's dead, kind of thing. It's a shame.
All right, well, what do we do now? Maybe, maybe David's suggestions is the way to go here, you know, say, go back to the client, see if there's a way you can work with this without making it a mess on the front of the site, have a design that better fits with the existing grays without big retaining walls, or, it seems, it seems that a way to make it less impactful. Maybe there is, you know, maybe your client would, you could still, is, David said, maybe your client could, you could still, you could still have the classical feel that he's looking for without having it be a straightforward center entrance colonial that could be located on this floor, but, but one that actually works with, with the conduit. I mean, there, there are many examples all over New England of older houses that, that did that, because they, they didn't have the kinds of equipment that we do to move things around in, in, in major ways. And so those examples exist out there, maybe we could, maybe we could have another run at it.
If I may, just, shingle-style houses sell as well as center entrance colonials these days, that they're just as, just as popular. Shingle-style architecture knows how to work with an uneven site. They're very good, they're very, they're, they're, those are the kinds of designs, they're, many of them are built right over rocks. And I would encourage you to look at something like that rather than a center entrance colonial. I don't think you'll find, the real estate community would find that any less saleable than a center entrance colonial, but you might actually be able to get something to fit onto your site.
It's possible.
Because I think Signio likes sort of traditional...
Yeah, they want a traditional house. I'm not, we're not trying to force a modern house on them, but I did something that works with the land. And that was one of the joys of the shingle style, is how well it worked with the land.
That's true, that's a very good point.
And, I mean, background and mediation and stuff, so I've always encouraged people building something new to check in with the neighbors and get feedback, and, you know, good communication is better than not.
The owner lives on the right?
Yeah, it's actually the...
Way in the back, you really can't see him, you can't see this.
I mean, I guess this thing's got pushed and pulled one way?
This is...
Pushed to the right?
Pushed to the right?
Yeah.
Making worse. Now we got a little room. I'm like, we're up here to that. I can't get back.
I think we could just cut young one driveway, how I... There's a big challenge for you. It really is. And, I mean, I don't know what your type of conversation, what your type of the owner and what sort of mandate of this you can do.
Well, speaking of this opportunity...
No, I mean, this is not, I mean, you know, this, we, we didn't design this house to put it in the market. I mean, he's been renting it for as long as he owned this lot, and that's what he's planning to do, so, he's gonna, he's gonna, yeah, he's gonna, you know, he's gonna have a hold of this lot for a long time, I mean, probably as long as he owns his, his house. He's not gonna, you can't, he's in the real estate market, and, you know...
Yeah, this is his personal also, so that's, that's a good thing to know, because definitely the amount of the difference on that more colonial style, not touring, we don't have to...
Worth a shot.
It's definitely a worth a shot.
I recommend to resume.
Okay. So we'll, we'll do as continuing. Shoot, what they...
I mean, look and see.
It's going to July, or...
Well, no, July second.
But, you know, they, they may not have enough time to also... There's a lot of places, some sort of, I think, we're gonna have to help one on this.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we'd have to continue it to then anyways, and if we end up continuing it beyond then, I mean, we have to continue to a date certain, so, if we start that, that...
On July second, exactly.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of, of the timing, because we want to do one in five o'clock conquer, and I was wondering if we could just start that off, and then basically anything that comes after about dealing with about an hour and fifteen for that, or we slide that back towards...
Well, you don't have to stop and check again, do you?
No, but we need to continue to date a time certain, so, I mean, if we, if we schedule this for seven thirty, I can always put, you know, if we say it needs to be nine o'clock, I can always put parentheses, continue to seven thirty, as long as we can't bump it before. So I can just say seven thirty, and then we'll just figure out the timing, and if they end up coming half hour, forty-five minutes after seven thirty, you know, it's no legal issue.
Well, we continue it for the second of July, seven thirty, and...
You guys are all going to check.
I'll be going here.
Well, it's either the second of July or sometime in September.
I will take a second one.
But do you think you'll actually have any?
Well, that's not a good thing.
You know, you know, the second of July, you can continue it on, so...
Do you want to get some nice in September now?
Don't rush.
Yeah. Do you want, but I mean, seriously, you know, after the summer, they'll be the usual call of the door.
I mean, I think at least we need to, you know, give them the opportunity to check with their client, of all, if and they say, you know, we're not ready yet, at least we have, you know, hearing, because the only other option is to, to re-advertise. I think at least we need to, you know, give them the opportunity to check with their client at all. Sometimes they say, you know, we're not ready yet. At least we have, you know, hearing, because the only other option is to, to re-advertise, you know, once we know. But Friday is when I need to advertise for July 2nd. So I say just plug them in at 7:30, we find out where they are. Maybe they need a couple extra weeks. We, we just check base. Or, you know, maybe they had a chance to revise some things.
Okay. So we'll continue to 7:30 on the 2nd, but we can always continue from there if it's, if you're not ready, or if there's something else. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only way we could do it would be a replacement structure. A notch, 49% of the walls, 74% of the roof.
Okay, want to change?